I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. McCullough. Welcome to the study meeting. This meeting will set the agenda for the 1,957th regular meeting of the Livonia City Council. That will be a voting meeting and will be held on November 14th of 2022. I'll note that we have six members present tonight. Ms. McIntyre is feeling potentially under the weather and didn't want to get any of us sick, so she's at home. We have no special groups tonight. I will go directly to audience communication. Is anybody in the audience liking to address counsel on anything that is not on the agenda this evening? You have three minutes to do so. Thank you.
Thank you, Christopher Martin, Livonia. Just want to talk about something I witnessed the last study session council meeting. It was on item two. And Jacob Rushlow was introducing a Ryan, I might get this wrong, Farrell's, okay, as a new employee. And he had started, I guess, a couple of months earlier. The weird thing about that, when watching it, is I did go look up the application for that job. And that can pay upwards of $109,000. Okay? Now, he might not get the 109, but it's somewhere between 82 and 109. So let's say he makes 100. That guy can't even introduce himself and speak for himself. I found that to be amazing, okay? I don't know if he took Tom Wilson's spot over there, running, because he said he was in charge of a water and sewer. I don't know what his job really is, except that he is here and came from Dearborn. But the, it would have been nice to have some type of thing where a new employee making that type of money comes up, stands at the podium and says, this is my name, this is my education, this is my background, and these are my job responsibilities within this city. I think that's something that should almost come natural, not have somebody speak for you, okay? Even when I was little, my parents never spoke too much for me. I could speak for myself. So I'd like to see that gentleman come back in at $100,000 and talk about himself and his job. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. In regards to what you've said, I'll just say, at least part of that may be my fault for not allowing him the opportunity to do so.
Well, here's, oh, do I have a couple of seconds?
You probably have 10 seconds.
Okay. Well, here's the thing. On an item agenda, you only speak about that item supposedly. So I would rather have him come in under audience communication, okay, and talk about himself.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Okay, if there is no other audience communication at this time, I'll note that this is a studying meeting. There will be no votes taken this evening. Council members will offer various motions that will be heard at the next regular meeting on November 14th of 2022. If you wish to participate in any of the agenda items this evening, please come to the podium during audience communication. You will have two minutes to speak to the item, and notice will be given as your time is expiring. With that said, we'll start with the agenda. Oh, excuse me. Do we have any counsel comments or anything, Mr. McCullough?
Thank you, Council President. Just a reminder, because I do believe our next meeting's the 14th, if I'm right, somewhere around there. Seedlings, they create braille books. They're located in Livonia. They've been around for a while. They do great things. Starting November 7th through November 13th, there's going to be an online auction fundraiser. And there's some pretty good items. One of them in particular is actually a dinner for two with Councilmember Brandon McCullough at Coaches. So I would highly recommend that that is going to be an amazing, amazing thing, especially funds going directly to Seedlings. So please get on the website. There are much better prizes than that, even though that is pretty cool. But no, get out there, bid up these things and support Seedlings. Thank you.
So they're expected to look at you, listen to you, and eat at the same time?
It's a big deal. I know.
It's tough.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Toy.
And maybe they get to play a little hockey when they're with him as well, because he is quite good at that. No, I just wanted to commend our AM and afternoon rotary group for a wonderful spaghetti dinner they had. Clerk Nash and I went over there and chowed down, and it was very good spaghetti and well attended. And those organizations have been around a long time. Councilman Dominic, you know, maybe when you were a young child, you benefited by them, but anyhow, they are a great group of men and women that do a lot of good things for our community. I just wanted to give them a shout out. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Toy. If there's nothing else, we will go to the agenda. Item number one is the award of bid for the towing and impound services coming to us from the Division of Police for a period of three years with two three-year renewal options from budgeted funds. Mr. McDermott?
Good evening.
Chief, happy birthday. In a couple, in a, what, six days, something like that?
Election Day. He's 62. Last 43 of those years right here with the city of Livonia.
Well, thank you for your service, sir.
Thank you very much for the kind words. Again, good evening. I'm here representing the Police Department in regards to making a recommendation to award the city towing services and contract to Livonia Towing. I have the city purchasing manager, Ina Bachelor, here with me tonight as well. Just to give everybody a little background on what was done in the process, the current city towing and impound services contract has been with Livonia Towing, and that was scheduled to expire on January 31st of this year. However, this past December, the owner of Livonia Towing agreed to renew its contract with the city under the same terms and conditions on a month-to-month basis. This extension was approved by the City Council and was designed to allow time for the city to conduct a competitive bidding process and to obtain approval of a new towing contract by the City Council. On the 23rd of December of last year, we sent out vendor notification and requests for seal proposals through the Michigan Intergovernmental Trade Network. And there was notification of a pre-bid meeting given along with instructions, requirements, bid specifications to the potential bidders. So on January 17th of this year, the pre-bid meeting was held, and four vendors attended that. Vendors did not have to attend that in-house meeting, but those vendors were provided with proposal requirements, criteria for the selection, and were allowed to ask any questions that they had at that time. Additional questions were permitted in writing and answered by the purchasing manager. In response to questions from the pre-bid meeting and other questions that followed, the purchasing manager issued seven addendums to the original solicitation prior to the bid due date, which was May 31st. These addendums were issued to address the questions, make clarifications to all of the bidders. And then on May 31st of this year, two bid proposals in response to that solicitation were received and opened. One bid was from Area Towing and Recovery based in Taylor, Michigan. The other bid was from our current service provider, Livonia Towing, located at 12955 Levant. Upon conducting a towing and impound fee price comparison between the two companies, it was determined that Livonia Towing's fees were less expensive in most of the categories. This includes the most commonly used services, such as towing cars, small trucks and medium trucks, both surface streets and freeways, as well as daily storage charges and tire changes. Site visits and equipment inspections were conducted on June 29th, and the experience and references were checked. Livonia Towing site was examined and found to have the required equipment and site specifications, and two area towing sites were examined, including its current operating facility on Rochell Road in Taylor and the proposed site in Livonia. The equipment at the Taylor site met the requirements and was marked both area towing and star towing and recovery. The proposed Livonia operation site is located at 12719 Angster Road and is currently unoccupied. However, site inspectors believe the site would meet the bid specifications within the required 30 days of City Council approval of contract if the lot were cleaned and security cameras were installed. On September 19th, an evaluation committee met with representatives of both Area and Livonia Towing to conduct interviews. The evaluation committee was comprised of the city purchasing manager, Mayor's Chief of Staff, Chief Assistant City Attorney of the Law Department, and myself. Both companies were provided with a list of questions to answer and given an opportunity to provide additional information. And the evaluation criteria, the evaluation criteria, rather, included qualifications, experiences, references, equipment adequacy, the location, size, and condition of the tow yard, and their pricing fee schedules. Upon the completion of the interviews, the two proposals were scored independently and averaged to determine a ranking. Both companies were deemed to be qualified to provide the services requested. However, the final average score for Area Towing was 95.5, and the final average score for Livonia Towing was 100. Based on the examination of the two bids, the evaluation committee recommends the city award the bid and contract for towing services to Livonia Towing, as they are the highest-ranked bidder demonstrating an ability to meet the requirements set forth in the solicitation.
Thank you. Are there any initial questions from the council?
Mr. President.
Mr. Donovan.
So with Livonia Towing, have they been doing a job? I mean, the Police Department is satisfied with what they've been doing thus far?
Yes. The Police Department's been using Livonia Towing historically, I want to say, for over 40 years, and they've provided excellent service during that time.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. If there are no other questions from the, Ms. Toy?
If I may, to the chief, the Livonia Towing has switched hands, correct? I mean, Mr. Colts used to, if I said that right, John?
Clots.
Clots, thank you. Mr. Clots had owned that prior with his wife. They went to Bentley High School incidentally. And so they're good bulldogs. Anyways, and so does your wife, but I just, sorry, we have to have a little humor in these meetings at times. Has that made any difference in recent time, sir, in regards to service or the knowledge base or any of the rest of that?
No, they've proceeded on as though nothing much has really happened. As far as the service goes, the service is still being provided at the same level that we're used to getting.
Okay.
I believe the new owner took control of the company about a year and a half, maybe two years ago. But the other employees that are still employed there have been there for a lot of years longer than that. And so their collective experience, I think, has helped them with the transition, and we haven't noticed any decrease in service.
Okay. Appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Barr.
So the fees that we're talking about, when someone's car gets towed, that fee essentially gets passed through to that person, right?
Correct.
And the city's not paying that? Okay.
That person or their insurance company or someone responsible for the vehicle.
And forgive me if I missed it in here, but do we have a requirement that the towing company that we use has a yard in Livonia?
Yes.
Okay. And did I understand you correctly that the other bidder does not currently have one, but has a space that they were looking to use if they, did I understand that correctly?
That's correct. I believe they have a option to lease that property if they get the bid. And that was included in the requirements of the specifications, that they didn't have to, at the present time, be operating in the city, just be able to open up within 30 days of the council approving a contract.
Okay. Thanks.
Mr. Barr, if you recall, we studied the potential use of this yard that they're referring to earlier in the year.
I do remember that. Thank you for that.
It was all dependent on receiving this contract. Thank you. Any other questions from the council?
Mr. President.
Mr. McCullough.
Just looking over the price comparison, and I appreciate it, it's very detailed. Just to gain some, just to gain some insight, the over $10,000 for the one-hour minimum, I think that's item number three. Obviously, there's a differential there. Do you, do we have, I mean, just guesstimate a percentage of how many vehicles would fall under that category? I would assume not many.
It's a very small amount. That's the, that would have that gross vehicle weight that we would be requiring to be towed.
Okay. Yeah, because looking at that, that was the only question I had. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, Chief, if you don't mind, can you have a seat real quick? And I'm going to open up audience communication in regards to this matter. So on item number one, is there anybody in the audience wishing to address the council? Please come on up to the podium. Please identify yourself, your name, and your address, please.
My name is Shane Anders. I'm representing Area Towing, who bid on this contract. In the spirit of honoring this body's valuable time and the two minutes that you're provided, or three minutes, whatever it may be. I have simplified my comments to a written statement and the handout that I provided to all of the council members tonight. I believe that I was denied a fair and competitive bid process based on the evaluation committee's lack of due diligence to verify the experience and the qualifications of the company being recommended. Not to mention that they misrepresented their experience in their proposal, which a thorough review process based on best practices should have caught these discrepancies and disqualified the bidder. In closing, the city has a responsibility to ensure a fair and competitive bid process. Sometimes the bid process doesn't get it right. Many municipalities, state and federal agencies, provide a bid protest option, which affords a process to those who may feel that they were not afforded a fair and competitive What I put in writing, hopefully there'll be time at a later date prior to the award that I'll have an opportunity to address, hopefully, from what I understand in Livonia, the council has the ability to, I don't know if the correct word is table it, or send it to a committee and give them an opportunity to really dive into the concerns that I have that I provided in my bid protest.
15 seconds.
I'm all set. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Is there any other audience communication on item number one? Good evening. Your name and address, please.
Good evening. I'm Diane Wilson. I live at 28900 Savoy Court here in Livonia. I'm the owner, and so owner, of Livonia Towing. I did purchase Livonia Towing in March of '21. I have been associated and working for North Redford Towing for a year and a half prior to that, about a year prior to that, to get some experience with that, to address the concern here. It was explained in the very beginning meeting, the pre-bid meeting, that experience was a combination of the experience of the ownership, as well as the experience of the staff combined. And that requirement was met from us or by us. We have tried to do the transition, and I believe we have accomplished it as flawlessly as possible. We have automated our systems. We have improved our service in every way, shape, or form, and expanded our fleet since I have taken over the business. And at this stage of the game, I am a citizen of the city of Livonia. I take pride in focusing on the city of Livonia. And we are a Livonia-based company and have been for 40 years. We're a small company. Livonia Police Department and the city of Livonia is our priority. And our bid is accordingly, it gives the benefit of the citizens lesser pricing than going traveling outside the city based on the rate fee structure that we have designed. And I feel that we are extremely qualified to continue with this contract. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Last call for audience communication. I see none. Do I have any direction from the council?
Mr. President.
Mr. Donovan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you to the chief. Thank you to both individuals that spoke tonight. I sincerely appreciate both of your time. You know, just as a council member, from looking at the numbers and then speaking to the department head, which is a subject matter expert, I'm going to offer an approving. When you look at the numbers, they are better in terms of pricing, saving taxpayer dollars. And then again, the subject matter expert says that they're happy with currently, the current contract and the services provided. So I'm comfortable with offering approving, and I'd love to have any support from council. If there's any questions or anything like that, you know, I'm always available, but I think that's, everything seems pretty straightforward for me. Thank you, Mr. President.
Sounds good. I have noted your motion. At this time, because it's a study meeting, we do not need support. But I will note that, given the nature and the importance of this contract, I'm going to put this on the regular agenda so that we have a full vote on the matter. With that being said, that concludes item number one. That will be on the regular agenda on November 14th. We will move on to item number two. Thank you all. Item number two is a request to approve first of two potential two-year extensions of contract for caretaking services in the historical village at Greenmead from the Department of Parks and Rec with the independent contractor slash caretaker Jeffrey Ronain for a period of December 1, 2022 through November 30th of 2024, citing the original council resolution 396-19. Mr. Davis, can you tell me about the caretaking services of Mr. Ronain?
Sure. Thank you, Council President Jolly. Ted Davis, representing Parks and Recreation. Caretaker at the Greenmead Historical site actually just goes around every single night and monitors the site. It's a huge benefit to us, where, you know, potentially we could have vandalism out there or anything else going on, and it is a relief, honestly, to have Inspector Ronain out there providing the service for us. We're happy to, that he wanted to extend his agreement to additional years, and we hope he stays for the next two years after that as well. I'm happy to answer any questions council might have on this.
Ms. Toy.
Thank you to Mr. Davis, if I may, Mr. Chair. Mr. Davis, do we still have somebody that lives on the site in that house as well?
That is Inspector Ronain.
Is he living there then still?
Yes.
Okay. Is that part of his salary then?
Yes.
Or whatever? Okay.
That's all he receives, I believe.
That is all he receives.
Yeah, just the living allowance, so to speak, right?
Yes. He pays utilities for that site.
Yes, that's what I was going to go next, but that's okay. All right, well, you know, Mr. Chair, I'm going to ask for an approving on this because I believe Mr. Ronain has done a good job. He grew up in Livonia. His family's from Livonia.
Is he a bulldog?
I don't, I don't think Lou, or not Lou.
He's indicating he is.
But he was a police officer, and that is really kudos. I probably should have let Mr. Morgan do this, though. Yes, so anyhow, I'll offer the approving, Mr. Chair. If you, you can decide if you want to consent or regular.
Anybody else on the council? Any audience communication on item number two? Okay, I'll note that we have a motion to approve Mr. Ronain continuing as the caretaker at Greenmead. I'll just say that I've known Mr. Ronain professionally, primarily as a police officer and now inspector with the Livonia Police Department, and we couldn't have a better person doing this.
I agree.
So this will be on consent, and we'll move on to item number three.
Thank you very much.
Item number three is a request for authorization to use the American Rescue Plan Act funds from the Department of Finance for the provision of general fund government services. Mr. Slater, good evening.
Good evening, council. As you're aware, we have unspent American Rescue Plan Act dollars that have to be used by, the deadline to appropriate is end of '24, and then to spend by 2026. The final rules for the requirements to use these funds had a provision in there that said for communities that received less than $10 million, which would be us, that the only requirement is that these funds be used for provision of government services, which is, in essence, everything we do. What we're asking for tonight is that the dollars that we have, which is the unspent dollars, $8,497,000, $8,497,114, be applied to government services provided in 2022, and then concurrently, at the same time, the surplus that this would recreate, we would transfer to two different places. $4 million would go to the, a new fund for the senior center construction fund, and the balance would go to the building improvement fund, the existing building improvement fund for future building projects. The benefits to this is, number one, we meet all the timing deadlines by doing this, and number two, it avoids some of the onerous reporting requirements that we would have to undertake should this be applied to, for instance, a construction project. With that, I'd be happy to answer questions.
Any questions from the council? Mr. Barr.
Just one question, I think, Mike. You know, you're recommending that the money be split between 418 and a newly created 419, right?
Correct.
What is the, I don't necessarily have a problem with that. I understand the intent of what you're doing and support the intent of what you're doing. What's the need to create the new account? Why not just throw it all into 418? Is there some benefit strategically for us?
Yeah, I think, as you know, we're in the process of trying to fund a new senior center. And tracking the activity for that specific project separately from other building projects, I believe, will help us account for those dollars better.
Okay. Thanks.
Any audience communication? I see none. Can I have direction from the council?
Mr. Chair, I'll offer approving for consent if there's no objection.
Thank you, Mr. Barr. We have approving for consent on item number three. We will move on to item number four, in a water of contract from the Department of Finance for workers' compensation insurance coverage for December 1, 2022 through November 30th of 2024 from budgeted funds. Mr. Slater.
Good evening again. Our workers' compensation coverage expires at the end of this month. This is a recommendation to renew with Midwest Employers Casualty Company for the excess insurance portion of this, and then also to renew with the ASU Group for Claims Administration Services. The ASU contract is $35,500 a year, and that is the, is held flat from what we're paying this year. The excess insurance coverage is estimated to have a total premium of $180,163, which would be an increase of 4%. So with that, we'd ask that this insurance be renewed as recommended for a period of two years. Be happy answering questions.
Thank you, Mr. Slater. Counsel?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Toy?
I'll be happy to offer an approving.
Do we have any audience communication on item number four? I see none. We have an approving for consent. Moving on to five. A request to approve budget adjustments for fiscal year ending November 30th of 2022 from the Department of Finance. Mr. Slater.
Thank you. As we have done for a number of years now, we take a look at where we're at in terms of our actual costs and revenues compared to what was budgeted when the fiscal year 2022 budget was adopted. And there are some areas where we've had favorable experience and unfavorable, but the net is a favorable. In unfavorable, but the net is a favorable surplus of seven hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. I've listed in the communication the various categories where results have differed from what was projected. And we are once again recommending that that, that that money be split into two different categories. One is to take half of it, or three hundred fifty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars, and make an additional contribution to the VBA for our retired health insurance. And then the other half would be additional contribution to our Building Improvement Capital Projects Fund for purposes of future building projects. Be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. McCullough.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd personally like to see more of it go to the, the facilities, but we have to fund both. So I would offer an approving for consent if there's no objections.
Any other comments from the council? Audience communication on number five? I see none. We have an approving for consent, moving on to six. A request to renew the city's liability and property insurance coverage from the Department of Finance with the Michigan Municipal Risk Management Authority for the period of December one, twenty twenty-two to November thirtieth of twenty twenty-four. Mr. Slater.
Thank you. This is renewal of our property casualty insurance. We've been longtime members of the Michigan Municipal Risk Management Authority. They have provided a renewal quote of one million four hundred four thousand, seven hundred and fifty-eight dollars for the first year. This is an increase over, of seven percent over our current policy. But the upside to this is, upon renewal, we will receive back in the form of a net asset distribution, one million thirty-three thousand, two hundred nine dollars. So the net cost for the first year is a little under four hundred thousand dollars. The second year is dependent upon the reinsurance market and what MMRMA is going to have to pay for their reinsurance, but it is capped at eight percent. So we're recommending renewal with an excellent organization that has provided tremendous service to the city at really low rates when you consider the net asset distribution for the two-year period. Thank you.
Mr. Morgan.
Yes, I'll offer, offer a support on that for the consent agenda.
Anybody in the audience for item number six? I see none. We have an approving for consent. Are you done, Mr. Slater?
I'm done, thank you.
I love how the, the only smile you smiled was when you were done and walking away. Thanks. Item number seven. A request for approval to enter into an agreement between SMART and the city of Livonia from the Livonia Housing Commission for the municipal credit contract for period of July one, twenty twenty-two to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, with all credits to be used for the Livonia Community Transit Program. Good evening.
Good evening. Felicia Cross from the Livonia Transit Program. And yes, I'm asking for approval of the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three municipal credit contract from SMART. This is an annual agreement that we usually approve. The money goes to fund the transit program. And this year, we did see a decrease in the amount of funds. And I'm not sure of the reason why exactly, but I do know the municipal credit contract money does come from the gas tax. So I think all of the communities that get these funds have seen a reduction as well.
Thank you very much. Counsel? Mr. Barr?
Yeah, I mean, we do this each year. It's fairly routine. Offer approval for consent if there's no objection.
Thank you. Any audience communication on seven? I see none. You have an approval on consent. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item number eight is a request to amend the architectural contract through the qualification-based selection process with Hubble, Roth &amp; Clark from the Public Service Division for the architectural design and construction phase for the senior center addition and recreation center improvements, citing council resolution three seventy-eight dash twenty. Mr. Rushlow? What's this about?
Good evening, council. Thank you, Jacob Rushlow, Assistant Director of Public Works. As a catalyst to the Livonia Vision Twenty-One Master Plan for the Civic Center campus, a new senior center would be constructed as an addition to the existing recreation center. In order to advance this vision, a request for proposals was created and issued to our four as-needed architectural firms, and we received three responses from those firms. A proposal evaluation team was then created, including members of the DPW, the Planning and Economic Development Department, Parks and Recreation, Finance, and the mayor's office to review those proposals, conduct and participate in interviews with each firm, and provide scores for each component. An evaluation summary was prepared and is included in your informational packets. Architectural design services would include a planning phase with conceptual site plans and floor plans for up to four options with cost estimates for each. Schematic design phase to refine the program of spaces with preliminary design drawings, design development phase for detailed design drawings, building elevations, floor plans, material selections, mechanical, electrical plumbing, and controls, as well as construction documents for detailed construction and specifications, which would be used for bidding the project, as well as the administration of construction during the construction phase. The project delivery method for this overall project is planned to be completed with a construction manager for, construction management firm that would start their service as well as participate in the design phase process for cost control and value engineering. This is the same model that we had used to construct our new DPW headquarter building. In order, in order to proceed with architectural design, it's our recommendation that council proceed to award professional services contract to Hubble, Roth &amp; Clark through this QBS process in an amount not to exceed one million forty-six thousand from budgeted funds. And it is also requested that council approve an additional appropriation and expenditure in that same amount, one million forty-six thousand, from the unspent fund balance of the senior center construction fund. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Mr. McCullough.
Thank you, Council President. Through the chair to Mr. Rushlow. Everything seems in order. Obviously, this is a big undertaking and an exciting one to start going through schematic design and the construction docs. The one question I do have is, under the fee proposal, is it possible, you know, I know you've got construction administration on here already. If we were to only approve the design phase at six forty-four, six eighty-six, does that change at the amount, at the award of bid? If we could just approve, will they hold their fee on the construction administration at that time or no?
I'd have to ask HRC for an answer on that, and I'm not sure if they could answer it tonight or not. But I would, they may want to revisit that fee once we go through the design phase, knowing then exactly what the project is going to be.
Obviously, in the construction world right now, the, 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 the numbers are all over the place. You know, square footage prices are anywhere from, I've heard, two fifty to four hundred and fifty a square foot. And so while I look at that and I appreciate some of the numbers in there, and I know I see a very hefty twenty-five percent contingency with some other fees in there, I, I'm going to go ahead, I'm going to offer an approving for regular if, in the meantime, you could have that question answered. Just because, you know, for any residents out there, when you go through the construction process, it begins with schematic design, which everybody gets in there, figures out what they want, then it gets created in the construction docs, and then it goes out to bid. After the bid, it would be award of contract. And then, once the project goes buckets in the grounds, the construction administration would kick in. So that is the only thing I would like to get an answer on. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Vice President Toy, and then Mr. Donavich, and then maybe Mr. Barr.
Thank you so much. If I may go to Mr. Rushlow. Mr. Rushlow, do you recall what we paid on the initial design phase for the DPW building?
For the architectural design of the building?
For what you're asking for tonight, the first one.
Off the top of my head, I do not recall what the architectural design fee was for that project.
Would you be able to bring that back to us?
Yes, we can do that.
And just, just as a note, are we, it's kind of a funny question, but we're paying a little bit more for goods and services right now with this economy, et cetera, are we not? Or have you seen an increase? I wouldn't base that on the DPW. I know it was some time back, blah, blah, blah. But I mean, currently, in this environment, I just wondered because we're trying to gather our pennies together to put this together, you know, through Wayne County, through the COVID money, other sources. And I just want to make sure we're on good foot and, you know, why I support the venue of it. I, I just wondered, in your knowledge base, where are we at?
Yeah, sure, good question. So typically, whether it's an engineering consultant or architectural consultant, we, when we do a big project and we're working with them through a QBS, we have fee schedules already incorporated into the contract. So those hourly fee schedules are there for year one, two, three, four, five, whatever the case is. I would imagine that, once those contracts are coming up due with their increased costs for their overhead, their staff, you know, rates themselves and their wages, they will be coming to us with those fee schedule increases. Currently, we're not seeing those because we are already locked in under the QBS process for hourly rate schedules.
Oh, good to hear. Okay, appreciate that. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Donavich.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you to Mr. Rushlow for being here, and thanks for the hard work that your department does on these sorts of projects. And thank you to HRC for putting together a really lengthy but very detailed package. I mean, it was pretty awesome to read through it and try to wrap your head around it. And I'm excited for the future of what this will look like. I know there's still a ton of questions out there, and the mayor's administration has been working on it. So I look forward to, you know, being, the conceptual designs coming to fruition in one day, having a nice new senior building because our seniors in our city do deserve it. And I think it'll be the catalyst to a lot of new future projects. If I understand correctly, the money would be coming to, the money we'd be approving, if this were to be approved, would be coming out of this new fund that we were just talking about a moment ago?
That's correct.
Okay, and, and, yeah, that'll be enough. Okay, thank you, Mr. Rushlow. Appreciate it, Mr. President, thanks.
Mr. Barr.
So, well, I appreciate the enthusiasm here. I think we're forgetting a really, really important detail. We're talking about approving the design of a building that we've not yet approved. And the reason we haven't approved it is because we don't have the money for it. So I have a number of questions. One is, how long is this bid good for? Or proposal, whatever we're calling it is.
The proposal, you mean, what they propose as their fee?
The prices that they propose, yeah, their proposed fee.
I don't think we had a specific timeframe in there where they had to hold those fees, but I can, I can go back and certainly ask.
So hypothetically speaking, and just full disclosure for residents that might be watching, we have some money, as you heard earlier tonight, set aside for this. There's some other money that we've previously received from some congressional action in Washington that presumably would be available for this. But the big piece for this is that we're, you know, earlier tonight, we, we took American Rescue Plan dollars that were given to Livonia and put some aside for this. But quite frankly, this price, this project hinges on getting some help from Wayne County's American Rescue Plan dollars. And that's something that's still, we've not gotten an answer on. I have not heard anything from the administration about that. The only thing I know is what I read in the paper this morning, that in the first round of funding, another neighboring community got money for their senior center, but we have not. Now, I understand there's another round of funding coming, but, but we just don't know. And, and so I have a tough time, even though I appreciate what you're trying to do to get ahead of this. And in principle, I, I'm, and I've said this in the discussions we've had prior to this, I, I don't have a problem with the direction of what we're trying to do here. But it seems extraordinarily premature to be approving a proposal for more than a million dollars. I, six hundred fifty-ish thousand I have in front of me right now is for the design phase for something that we've not approved, and we haven't approved because we don't have the money. Mr. Rushlow, you, and just, again, full disclosure, Mr. Rushlow and I had a chance to talk about this over the phone a little bit earlier, just, I could ask some questions, so I'll, you can confirm this. But my understanding is, we, we expect roughly, if this project were moved forward, roughly two years for construction, roughly a year for design. Is that accurate recollection of what?
Yes, that is.
Okay.
That is correct.
So if that's the case, and if this money needs to be spent by the end of twenty twenty-six due to the American Rescue Plan stipulations, we, we, we have roughly a year before we really need to be doing this. And the more I think about that, I just, I think it's premature to be having this discussion. And I, I actually came here with the intent of offering an approving because I like what you're trying to do, but making that contingent on getting the money from Wayne County. But as I've thought about it sitting here, I'm, I'm not comfortable doing that because there's other decisions that this council has to make, even when we get, we don't know how much they're going to give. We don't know, you know, if, if they don't give us what we think they might give us, and it could be anything from zero up to that, we have to find other sources for the money. So I, I just think it's premature, again, I'm not, I'm not throwing up over this proposal. I understand what you're trying to do, and I appreciate the spirit of it. It's just premature to be doing this. I think it'd be irresponsible for us to prove this right now. I would offer that we table this until we know what's happening with the money from Wayne County.
Just a clarifying question here. I believe the actions that we just put on the consent agenda proposed by Mr. Slater get rid of the timing parameters, correct?
So there's a caveat. So yes, it does for the ARPA funds that we have, that the city has received direct from that federal act. The money that we would receive from, say, Wayne County through their economic development and what our request has been, that money would still be, ARPA money would still be tied to those same timetables.
But this proposal is not.
This proposal for the design services directly would not be as is coming out of that new fund for the senior center construction fund that Mr. Slater presented just earlier tonight. I will add one thing and kind of to respond to Mr. Barr's line of questioning, like, on the timetable, right? So yes, we have until December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six to spend ARPA funds. What I, what I would recommend as a professional, I would hate to see happen, is we, we try to hold too tight to that deadline. And there's material shortages or construction delays or labor issues. And then us and every other community that's also trying to use ARPA funds by December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six are all trying to get that done in that timeframe, in that last year, and not have the time to do it and are running out, you know, and, and having to give money back. So that's why we've built that timetable in with getting it done sooner so that we're not up and pushing up against that deadline because we do not want to be in that situation.
Mr. Barr.
Can I ask a question related to that? But it's probably more appropriate for Mr. Slater. It's a financial question.
I will step aside.
You, you may know, Jacob, but I just, I'm guessing Mike knows. So the money from the county, presuming we get it, would have to be spent by the end of twenty twenty-six.
Correct. Unless, unless the county has even more stringent timeframes on it, but.
So let's, this is all hypothetical right now, but let's say that we're pushing that deadline. Is it, would it be permissible for us to spend the county's money first and hold Livonia's money that could be good past that date?
Yes, that's exactly what I would recommend.
Okay, and, and so with that, I'll just make this comment. And, and Mr. Rushlow, I appreciate what you're saying. It's a valid concern about, don't want to be caught in a situation where we're short of materials. What I'm concerned about is approving something and then finding ourselves caught in a situation where we're short of money. And I'm frankly a lot more concerned about that. So I, I would still hold, I, I think the most important thing, the most appropriate thing would be to table this until we know what's happening on the funding side. Thanks.
Mr. Donavich.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Councilman Barr. I understand, you know, his concerns and, and some of the issues that he looks at this with. But I'm looking at it from a different scope in the sense of, do I understand for us to even qualify to get funds from outside sources, i.e. whether it be the county or any, any other organization, we're going to need some actual conceptual designs to present to the county? That's the way I understand it.
That is definitely a, a, a big piece of the puzzle when you're making a request for any, any type of a grant or, you know, fund like that, is to have a plan in place. And a big part of this preliminary scope of work, the first few months, is going to be going through and doing planning and programming with a committee that we'd like to make up with some council members, members of staff, members from the senior community to get together and do that programming for this building before HRC puts a pen to paper and starts drawing anything in design, is going through that planning process. That has to happen ahead of time. No matter what we do at the building, where we put it, how big it is, that step still needs to take place, and that's within the scope. The earlier we can get going on that, the better idea we'll have of what the building's going to look like, how big it's going to be, how are the spaces programmed within the building. And we're in a really good position to make any funding requests we need to.
So with that being said, again, I-
So with that being said, again, I totally understand what Councilman Barr is getting at. I don't want to spend money for something and then we end up not doing it for whatever reason may be. But at the same time, for us to even be qualified to be successful with this potential project, we need to have really good drawings and really pitch to different organizations, the county, et cetera, that, you know, we are viable and justified in getting X amount of dollars. I'm not going to invest in something if I don't have good designs. And when petitioners come before us, we typically want really detailed designs and whatnot before we even approve it. And they may, they may spend large sums of money and still be denied. That's just a risky run in, in business. Same goes with this project. We need to have very detailed designs and whatnot to be able to even, you know, compete with some of these other communities within Wayne County and the state that are asking for these dollars. So, and then I think about Councilman McCullough. I think that this would be a good point where we don't approve the, the construction costs just yet. We approve the design costs, the six hundred thousand, whatever that may be. And if HRC is a good partner with us, they will meet those numbers that they've already given to us. They will keep that price if they care about having a good future partnership with us and not change those prices regardless. Understand that we have to be good stewards of taxpayer dollars. And it's, we're already spending a lot of money as it is just for the designs, not knowing what the future's going to look like, not knowing if we are going to get money from X or, or anywhere else. So I expect them to meet their dollar amount. And, and we approve the design fees and, and fund that and get some really good designs because I know they're, they're great at what they do. And then when we are ready to spend more taxpayer dollars, we will come back and, and spend those construction services designs as Councilman McCullough has spoken about. And I hope that that is the path we take. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. President. I'm going to go to Mr. McCullough and then Ms. Toy.
Thank you, Council President. Through the chair to Mr. Ruslow, I'm going to complicate this just a little further. If there's a way that you could ask the design, the A and E firm. So I assume that we already probably have an ALTA on file with the Rec Center property, right? I would assume so. So from a civil.
Yes.
So that's good. That means it's a lot of less money that we have to spend there. Is there any chance that you could ask them, just for us being fiscally responsible, to see if they could offer up a schematic design cost, a construction docs cost, a bidding doc, cost? Just obviously putting in, in their shoes with that. And, and in the event that something does happen, because, you know, schematic design, once you get the committee set up, that could be anywhere from three to six months. That's probably being generous. And then construction docs could be two to three, depending on what time of the season. So before this even hits the streets, I would imagine that we would need the funding in place before you guys went out to mitten on that, I would assume. So I don't know if it's possible that we could chop it up and do a little value specifications? If that's a new lingo I can create, that would, I think, ease everybody's mind.
Thank you, Mr. Donavich. Uh, Ms. Toy, I'm sorry.
That's all right. I, if I may.
I thought he wanted to say something else.
Oh, I'm sorry. Did you want to say?
No, thank you, Mr. Jolly.
All right. Just if I could ask McCullough to explain that, like, in plain English.
All right. All right. So, if I may.
I'm sorry. I wasn't trying to be insulting. I just didn't understand.
So when you take on a big capital project such as this, when I bring up an ALTA, that's basically the survey, right? That's a survey of the physical property. And since the Rec Center was constructed, what, going on fifteen, probably twenty years, that's a long time. We probably have all of that expensive documents already in place. So when we talk about schematic design, basically, the high-level version of schematic design is, is engineers and the user, which would be, you know, commissions, committees, probably focusing on us. And we're going to go and say, hey, we want, you know, this space to have this programming, this, you know. And so you basically create boxes, and then we start looking at cost, and then we start bringing that down. That process takes a long time. When you get into the construction docs, we pretty much know what we want for size-wise. And then that starts getting into the finishes. So the construction decks, they're going to create those monster books that have thousands of pages in it. So there's usually three phases, and forgive me if I'm out of turn, but I've been through this a few times. So if we could break it up, the different phases, you know, the schematic design is just putting thought onto paper, and that's going to take some time. And you know what? Then we could tell our friends that are supposed to be getting funding to get the, as Jerry Maguire said, show me the money.
Exactly. Mr. Chair, if I may, just continue with Mr. Ruslow, or perhaps just to make a few statements. I, I, I'm, I am a little concerned too when it comes to money. I get a little gun shy here. I would feel more comfortable, much like the Greenmead project, that we kind of pull back a little bit. And we have not only committed the whole, but we do have a committee that I chair, the senior committee, if you will, for the council. And it used to be we put things into committees so that we could study them further. So that all of a sudden, and, and you guys have not done this to us, I don't mean it in a derogatory sense, but that we come to a study meeting and, you know, you talk about it, and you're all excited about it, which, it is an exciting project. But then we're asked to make a quick decision within the next two weeks. And then we get feedback from the seniors that have a confusion about what's going on. I've had a lot of those calls, and here and there, when I go over there, it's like, you know, quite frankly, we're taking their building away. So I think we've got some work to do over there. And I know that Mr. Davis and others have really tried to, you know, get, get at the bottom of that a little bit. But I think we got to massage this just a little bit more. There, you know, some folks are confused about what we're trying to do, take away their building. Well, it's not their building, it's the city's building, obviously, but you know what I mean. They go there every day, they have lunch, they, you know, play bingo, whatever they do over there. Exactly. I could join very shortly here. But anyhow, I, I would like to see us pull back on this just a tad, just to give us a little bit more time. Other members, we, we're missing a member tonight, to digest it a little bit more and maybe ask you some questions. Maybe have the folks that are representing us down in Wayne County, since it's hit the newspaper that we didn't get that first round of money, so that we can begin to understand a little bit, maybe we can even help with some of that, of people we know, you know, in and around the county, the state, whatever. I don't know. It just, I, I just feel like we're being rushed, and I don't want to be rushed. I, I want to be able to give the elevator speech to those seniors or to that, my constituents, to say, this is what we're doing, and we're excited about it, and we're excited anyhow, but this is what it may involve. We need your ideas too. And I know we're going to get those eventually. But you kind of see where I'm coming from. As an elected official, you kind of get hit with that stuff. And then the whole question of money is, is scary in this day and age right now, you know? Not that I'm not scared to spend money, but I'm just saying, if we could just have a little bit more time, maybe put this in the committee of the whole and bring some of those players in, if our president wouldn't mind that. I, I, for one, would feel a little bit more comfortable with that on some of the points my colleagues are raising. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Mr. Donavich, and then after this, I'd like to wrap this up with some direction from the council.
Thank you, Mr. Jolly. Well, I think there is an approving for the regular currently. And I guess a statement and a question, we're still able to hold committee meetings about this because this is, this is living, right? Like, if, if we approve this at a regular, we move forward, this is living where we could have our committee meetings, whether it be a committee of the whole or a subcommittee, and still request members from HRC to come in and essentially have a, you know, ongoing discussion of while we're at committee meetings, as opposed to having committee meetings beforehand and, and belaboring this and waiting. So maybe we do lose opportunities for money, because that's my worry. If we wait too long to have an actual conceptual design, I'm worried that we may miss out on opportunities. While other communities, too, my colleague Scott Barr made a comment earlier that another, other communities have already received funding, and I wish you would have known about that. I didn't hear anything from the mayor's office about that. I wish you would have known. But regardless, other communities are getting money. And it's my, I'm scared that if we wait too long and we don't start getting designs, because to Councilman McCullough's points, these designs take right a long time anyways. And my, my opinion is, let's get this voted on just for the design, hold off on the construction costs. They should be a good partner with us and match their obligation and their numbers. While the design phase is going on, there's nothing that says that us as a council cannot collaborate and have, great point by Councilman Montoya, to have members from the senior community and the commissions come to city council, whether it be a committee of whatever. And, and we, as a council, have the authority, invite the guests from HRC and whatnot. And they get to hear active input that maybe spurs ideas for their great talented people that they already employ. And it can be a collaborative thing, working through it in the moment, so that we're able to accomplish multiple things and while also being stewards, good stewards for tax dollars. Thank you, Mr. President.
So, Mr. Donavich, I'm not sure that this is or is not already existing in terms of the item of a new senior center within the committee structure. Do you want to offer that, and we can have clarity before the regular?
Yes, Mr. President. Thank you very much.
All right. With that being said, we have an approving, and we have a motion for the senior center to be in committee, potentially, in the committee structure, potentially.
Is tabling a motion or not?
You can make a motion for no further action, I believe. Do you want to offer that?
Mr. Chair, I guess why I don't want to do that is I, I'm not looking to deny this. And I, and I think no further action essentially is that. So maybe, maybe I don't need to do anything, but I just, what, what I think is the right thing to do, and maybe I don't have support from council on this, but would just be to table this. Because I don't want to deny it. I just don't know if that's a motion.
Whether or not it is a motion, I think in the past, we have probably just put things in committee and held them there until there was some actionable item that we wanted to proceed on.
Yeah, I, my thinking on that is, because when this time comes, I understand their sense of urgency. We put it in a committee, that adds time to pull it out of committee and do this. I just feel like we're, we're set to do what they want to do. I guess, council can decide what they want to do. My question is, maybe through the chair to law, is, is tabling a resolution that we would vote on?
Tabling wouldn't be a resolution. Tabling would be if you, motion, did a motion to table it right now, we wouldn't proceed any further beyond the study agenda.
So there'd be no resolution, but I, I could, again, I have no idea if there's support for this. I could make a motion to table, and we would vote on that at the regular.
If you had a motion to table, and if you had support, we could vote on it.
Okay. Then, Mr. Jolly, we're fine with the resolutions, and I guess if, if I want to do that, I can do that at the regular. Thanks.
We can do whatever we want at the regular. Any audience communication in regards to item number eight? I see none. We have direction from the council. Ms. Toy was talking about an elevator pitch with her history in elevators. That would be a rather long pitch. So she might want to brush up on the details. We'll move on to item number nine. A request for authorization to purchase one Freightliner single-axle truck outfitted as a swap loader with attachments through the Rochester Hills Co-op Award Agreement, RFP RH 20023, from the Public Works Division for use by the Water Department from budgeted funds. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, council. Don Rohr, FDPW. As mentioned, we are looking to purchase a new truck, a single-axle, outfitted as a swap loader. This new truck is a multi-use vehicle. As I mentioned, will be outfitted as a swap loader with interchangeable dump box, ten-foot-long flatbed, and multiple other accessibles that can go on there as well. Again, for use for the Water Division, this is a year-round vehicle. This swap loader is a hook lift hoist that can quickly swap different skid-mounted containers and boxes containing different various tools, equipment needed to do all types of different operations, maintenance, and emergency response tasks handled in the Water Department. As mentioned, this truck would be purchased through the Rochester Hills Co-op Award Agreement. The truck would be supplied by Wolverine Freightliner. Upfitting would be completed by Truck and Trailer Specialists. Funds for the budgeted, funds are budgeted in the 2023 Water and Sewer Fund, and we would anticipate taking delivery of this vehicle sometime well after December 1st of 2022. In order to proceed with this purchase, it's the recommendation of the department, the council authorized the appropriation of funds and an expenditure in the amount of ninety-eight thousand, two-hundred-and-one dollars to Wolverine Freightliner and one 2023 Freightliner single-axle dump truck in the amount of one-hundred-and-thirty-thousand, six-hundred-and-fifteen for outfitting to Truck and Trailer Specialists in a total amount not to exceed 228,816. And this will be a replacement vehicle in our department. It will not be expanding the fleet. So I would be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Toy.
It's been a long time since we've approved a swap loader of this sort, Mr. Rohr. But I, I can understand what you need this for, and I would like to offer an approving, sir. And perhaps you could name the truck after Jim Jolly. Yeah.
We'll initial it to JJ if that works.
JJ, yes, JJ.
That's cool.
I'm honored.
I'm honored.
Any audience communication? I see none. We have direction on item number nine, approving for consent. Item number 10 is a request for authorization to purchase one Trail Beast. That's the one I want. One Trail Beast easement machine from the Department of Public Works Sewer Department to replace the current outdated equipment from budgeted funds. Mr. Rohr.
Thank you. We just wanted to use Beast because it's so close to Halloween, but really, we could have just went with easement machine. Again, this new easement machine is scheduled to replace an outdated unit. That's a 2008 unit model that's long surpassed its life expectancy. And we would be disposing of that old piece of equipment through the auction process. The rear easement machines are used routinely throughout the city for preventative maintenance and cleaning of the rear easement sanitary sewers that are inaccessible with our larger jet trucks that you may see. The new piece of equipment is very similar to our existing unit with an addition of an auto wand, auto wind guide and a suit for the sewer hose to enhance safety and operation of the machinery. Bid specs were prepared and put out on mitten. We received three bids. Jack Duhany Companies provided the lowest bid at a cost of sixty thousand dollars, which fully met our equipment specs requirements. It is the recommendation of the department that council authorized an expenditure in the amount of sixty thousand to Jack Duhany Companies for the purchase of this easement machine. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Direction from the council?
Council President.
Mr. McCullough.
It had me at beast mode and engaged with the glamour shot of, so I, I'm putting that, an approving on consent.
Any audience communication? I see none. We have an approving on 10 for consent. We'll move to 11. A request for authorization to purchase one Toro Grounds Master 3505-D through the State of Michigan bid process from DPW to replace equipment that has exceeded life expectancy from budgeted funds. Mr. Rohr.
Appreciate it. Again, this is a new mower, as you stated, that will be replacing an outdated unit that exceeded its life expectancy and will be disposed of through the auction process. The mower will be used by the Parks Department for mowing ball diamonds, soccer fields at Bicentennial Park and Ford Field. Purchase will be through a Sourcewell pricing, which provides us a 20% discount under retail pricing as a municipality. Funds are budgeted in the 2023 capital outlay, and we anticipate taking delivery of this piece of equipment well after December 1st of 2022. It's the recommendation of the department. The council authorized the expenditure in the amount of thirty-eight thousand, five-hundred-and-fifty-six dollars and sixty-seven cents to Spartan distributor, distributors for the purchase of this mower. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Morgan.
Yeah, I'll, I'll offer a proving for consent.
Okay. Any audience communication? I see none. We have direction 11 approving for consent. Item number 12, request for additional appropriation and expenditure.
Thank you, council.
Thank you, Mr. Rohr. Request for additional appropriation and expenditure from the Engineering Division to close out the Ben Chilani Park Improvement Project in the amount of twenty-four thousand, eight-hundred-and-sixty-five dollars and the new total of one-hundred-and-twenty-eight thousand, one-hundred-and-fifty-five dollars, setting council resolution 143-22. Mr. Lear.
Yeah, I gave a, I get the night off on this one, so. It was my project, so I, standing up here explaining. During the construction of the Ben Chilani Park improvements that are going on out there, we ran into a lot of small issues, kind of based on discrepancies between the topo that was provided to us, and then things that we uncovered once we broke ground out there. Nagel paving was able to kind of help us redesign and reestablish some grades, but it took a lot of extra exclamation out of the, the park in order to make sure everything drained correctly. After it was all said and done, we were over by twenty-four thousand, eight-hundred-and-sixty-five and twenty-one, and we're asking for the council to approve additional. council to approve additional funds from the unexpendited fund balance of the general fund in order to close out the contract.
Mr. Chair.
Vice President Toy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, you know, I, I'm going to offer an approving, you can decide if you want to consider or not. This is just an outstanding program we're doing up there, and thanks to you and your family and everyone that was involved in this. I know, Jim, you did, you know, a lot of work on this, and I appreciate your knowledge and your wisdom in getting this together, and also the Salini family that has helped us out, you know, not only with this, but my goodness, Hearts of Livonia, they've been an intricate part in our community, St. Mary's Hospital, I mean, goes, goes back to the Father, and of course, they're Italians, so, you know, that's always a plus. But I just want to say thank you to our engineering department and others for doing this, and it's looking great over there, even though I'm not sure what all those little machines are, but it's going to be a wonderful facility for that end of town. Thank you, and thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Approving, did I say approving?
Yep, we'll do approving on consent on 12. If there is any audience communication, speak now. I see none. Item 13, last but not least, the proposed amendments to the Livonia Court of Ordinances as amended from the Department of Law to Section 020 and 030 to Title IX, specifically Chapter 83 citing child abuse. Mr. Bernier.
Yes, good evening. Currently, our child, our ordinance, our criminal ordinance contains two different child abuse provisions, child abuse third and child abuse four. It's created a bunch, some confusion, under state law, child abuse third is a felony, child abuse four is a one-year misdemeanor. As council knows, the most that we can punish somebody on a misdemeanor on a local ordinance is a 93-day, 93-day misdemeanor. We have had some cases that have caused confusion because of the calling, calling something a child abuse third degree, which is a felony, but we're proceeding on a 93-day misdemeanor. So what we did was we consolidated both the chapters, the third and the fourth, into one single ordinance and just calling it child abuse, and it takes into consideration the factors of both child abuse third and fourth. I do want to point out that, on the, just in case someone's watching, on the child abuse third, when there's injury and it could be a felony, that's obviously, we take those locally when the injuries are not severe. If it's severe injuries, we are going to send it down to the Wayne County Prosecutor's Office to be handled as a felony, but if there are injuries that are not severe, we will handle them locally because we get much better treatment for our victims and for everyone involved in the case. As you know, Wayne County is overworked, and they may not give it the same attention that we give it in the, in the district court here. So we propose to consolidate them into one and just call it child abuse.
Offer an approving and...
It would be a first read.
I'm sorry, I'll give it first reading, and if we can do anything else, those crazy people, let's do it. Any...
We'll, we'll put it down for a first read then.
Yes, please, for me, if that's okay, Mr. Chair.
Yep, audience communication? I see none, that'll be a first read on the regular agenda there. That concludes our agenda for the study session this evening. Do I have any closing comments from my colleagues on the council?
Mr. Chair, if I may, for those people that didn't know, our legislative director, Karen Samula, has passed away with lung cancer, she was an intricate part of our community, and also Carolyn DeComo, who is the wife of Don DeComo, who did a lot of work, and so did Carolyn in this community with Hospice and the Italian-American Club as well, those two women were indeed pioneers. Sometimes people tune in late, and I just want them to know, I don't have any particulars on funeral arrangements, but, you know, watch your newspaper, watch the internet, perhaps there'll be something from the families then. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. If there's nothing else, the meeting is adjourned. Good night, Livonia.